Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plans, design review, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a rezoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on zoning requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here at Carnegie Town Hall. The Planning Commission first can set up regular. In order to ensure on the consented, the planning commission apply the following criteria. First, the request can be with the shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item, second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone, identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation. Please state your name, and then we request that you keep your comments to five minutes or less, and then if you are giving testimony on the same item, that you present new testimony on that item. So I will present the consent agenda items. Item number one is approval of the December minutes of the regular meeting. Item number two is plaques. Item number three is a rezone from the Westwood Valley Plan Development District to the RA1 Residential District for allowed uses at West 32nd Street and Brook Drive. Item number four is a major amendment in subarea A and B of the Interstate Crossings Business Park Plan Development District to allow for additional land uses at 5124 South Solberg Avenue. Item number five is a major amendment to subarea B of the Whispering Woods Plan Development District to change the allowed land uses at the southeast of the East 57th Street and South Bonson Avenue. Item number six is a special use permit in subarea A of the Prairie Meadows Plan Development District to allow an on sale alcohol establishment at 421 West 69th. Item number seven is a conditional use permit in the RS2 Residential District to allow a bed and breakfast at 127 South Duluth Avenue. Item number eight is a final development plan in subarea A, the Brooks Crossing Plan Development District, to develop a 260-unit apartment complex at East 54th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. Item number nine is a final development plan in subarea B of the Brooks Crossing Plan Development District to construct a multifamily housing complex at East 54th Street and South Dubuque Avenue. Item numbers 10 is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls amending the revised ordinance of the city by amending the Board of Adjustment Public Notice. Are there any objections from the audience to any items listed on the consent agenda today? Can you please step forward and state your name, please?
My name is Roger Wilks.
And Roger, what item?
Number seven, please.
Number seven, you'd like moved to the regular agenda?
Please.
Okay. Any other audience members? Come on forward.
Gary Har.
Um, number eight, number nine.
You would like moved to the regular?
Yes.
Okay. Items number eight and nine. Anybody else oppose anything on the regular agenda? Okay. Anybody from staff have anything to add?
Madam Chair, we received a request to defer item number three to February 1st, and a request to withdraw item number five.
Okay. So, we'll go over this real quickly. Item number three is deferred. Item number four is going to be moved to the regular agenda. Item number five is withdrawn. Item number seven, eight, and nine will move to the regular agenda.
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members to any of the items remaining on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, did somebody request item four be moved?
Uh, the neighborhood person that requested it did not come to have it moved. Is that my understanding?
Right. So, yeah, your motion, you need to decide if you want item number four moved or not to the regular. I don't believe that person who spoke to us is.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. We're all good. So, are there any other objections? Having none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with item three deferred, item five withdrawn, and item seven, eight, and nine moved to the regular agenda.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. I will look for an approval on the regular agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation to approve the regular agenda with items seven, eight, and nine moved to it.
Great. Is there a second?
Third.
Moved and seconded for the regular agenda, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. The regular agenda carries. We will begin with item number seven, staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Item seven is a request for a conditional use permit in the RS2 Residential District for a bed and breakfast establishment, which is allowed in the RS2 District by conditional use. There are a number of conditions that the applicant has to meet in order to qualify for this conditional use permit, and those are listed in your staff report. We'll get to that with the recommendations because they will be conditions for approval. The applicant is Tammy Marie Francis, and the owner of the subject property at the current time is Wells Fargo Trust Department, located at 127 South Duluth Avenue. We've received a business plan, a site plan, and a floor plan that indicates compliance or intent to comply with the conditions for approval. To the north, we have residential development in the RS2 District. It's a historic neighborhood cathedral district. To the south, it's C4 in the planned commercial. To the east, it's RS2 Residential, and to the west, RA1 Residential. The subject property is actually two parcels, one of which is commercial and the other which is zoned residential. It's the residential portion that they want to use the bed and breakfast for. It's a historic house and has currently come on the market. We find that the proposed development is compatible with minor conflict potential, and that deals mainly with the parking issue. The requirements for a bed and breakfast are that you provide one parking spot for every bedroom or every guest bedroom. There are four guest bedrooms provided and proposed. One additional living space has to be provided for the owner occupant. The applicant is proposing to open this establishment in the historic home. A kitchen, pantry, dining, and living rooms are located on the main level. Five bedrooms, two bathrooms, and one three-quarter bathroom are located on the second floor. The off-street parking is provided off an alley at the rear of the home. Parking is allowed in the rear yard of a residential district, and the plan that they have provided show that they meet the parking requirements. No other changes to the historic home are proposed as part of the application. There will be remodeling that's required inside in order to meet code requirements and the requirements of the conditional use for a bed and breakfast. It's a 3,786-foot square foot structure built in 1893, prominently located, easily accessible from a major arterial street on the edge of a historic neighborhood. Staff considers that to be a reasonable transitional use into the historic neighborhood from a busy commercial street. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions, and there are eight of them. And there are eight because we did not have a plan that exactly met those requirements submitted, so we have to make those conditions for approval, and they will have to meet those conditions in order to get their occupancy permit. The first one, their plans need to show compliance with applicable state laws, including registration with the South Dakota Department of Health, maintaining a guest list, and providing a smoke detector in each sleeping room. The second one is a business signage, not more than four square foot in area. If it's provided, not be illuminated. The third one, the establishment is owner occupied. The applicant is not yet the owner. And not more than four bedrooms in the home will be used for housing guests. The fourth one, one onsite parking space per guest room is provided in addition to parking requirements for the principal use. Five, the length of stay at the establishment will not exceed 14 days during any 120 consecutive day period. Six, meals are limited to breakfast, which is prepared in a common facility household kitchen. Meals are served only to overnight registered guests, and cooking is not permitted in the sleeping rooms. Seven, the building meets all building codes and zoning requirements, a site plan showing the location of guest parking spaces, and a floor plan showing location of the sleeping rooms, lavatories, and bathing facilities, and kitchen is provided. And finally, eight, the property owner be a member in good standing of a reservation service organization. Staff had received calls from the listing real estate agent, who was expressed a concern about would this tie up the property should the business not go forward, and they were satisfied with the answer that it would not. And then, today I did receive calls from the person who requested it be moved off the consent agenda, and so they will come forward to express their comments. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions of staff? No? Thank you. Is the petitioner here, please? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Tammy Francis.
Tammy, do you have anything additional to add to what Steve has already said?
I'd like to add that I have contacted every agency I believe that I'm going to need to have contact with. I haven't been able to join any organizations at this point without knowing if the business is going to go or not go, but everything is in place with the health department. The fire department has been out there to look at the home and plan with me what it is I need to do. I have, I'm going on January 20th to peer, to bed and breakfasts, huge conference that's going on where there's going to be a lot of support and help there on rules, regulations, how to do financing, all that kind of stuff. So I really feel like I'm pretty prepared for what's going on. And I do want to reiterate that the historical part of the house was the draw to the house. That was the part that I wanted. And if there do have to be any changes to the house, and anything would have to be removed or something that was historical, the plan is to put it back in the same form that it was. But otherwise, all the other city ordinances and everything I pretty much have in check unless somebody introduces me to something new. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Tammy? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of the audience here to speak on this item?
My name's Roger Wilks. I own the house right next door at 123 South Duluth. I don't have a problem with somebody buying the house, and she might be the greatest neighbor in the world, but it's an old house, needs a lot of work on the outside, and somebody's going to need to know how to maintain it and keep it up. And as far as the parking goes, I'm the only one on the block with extra parking, and I'm afraid that people are going to park in my area, and I won't allow it. I mean, there's people on the other side of my house that they park there in the winter. Sometimes they ask me, you know, and there's only so many spots that somebody can park, and like I said, I'm the only one with extra, because I own a, on Summit, there's, on the other side of the alley, I own that part too. And that's the extra parking. I got a garage back there, you know. I mean, there's a bed and breakfast one block, exactly one block away, and they finally sold it for $100,000 less last week. Because I can't imagine there's two bed and breakfasts that are going to be in the same neighborhood and make it worth, somebody's, you know, somebody's going to have to have some money to keep this house up, and, you know, that's my whole, you know, like I said, she might be the greatest neighbor, and that'd be great, but I just want to make sure that they're going to be able to maintain it. If something happens, they can't make, you know, they can't make it in a bed and breakfast, are they going to convert it into apartments? You know, that's, you know, everybody on my side of the block I've talked to, and nobody really wants another bed and breakfast, you know. But I'm here to listen to what somebody's got to say about it, so.
And really, Roger, we're here as a land use. Does this property in this neighborhood make sense as a land use? We, and for sure, we want to ensure that the stipulations are met with regard to parking, but does a bed and breakfast fit this neighborhood overall? And that's really what our decision is here to make.
It's really a busy intersection there for a bed and breakfast. We have police drive by all the time in the back, and I've talked to a couple of them. I didn't know who they were, but they asked me, you know, what was going on with the signs, and I told them, and they says, you know, it's kind of a busy intersection for some bed and breakfast, and the one up the street can't make it very well, so how can this one? So that's my main concern, is somebody buys it and they can't afford it once they own it, you know.
Okay. Any questions of Roger?
Madam Chair, Roger, you own the property right directly to the north.
Yes, sir.
Is yours a historic home?
Yes, sir. It's a little bit older than ours.
And maybe you could help me here. When that's put on the historic register, if you wanted to change things on your house, is there a permission process you have to go through considering the exterior?
Not really. There's, there might be a few things. I've been down and talked to them down at the Historical Society and stuff, and, you know. I don't think that you really have to, there's not nothing that, you know, unless you have it registered and you get deferred taxes and all that stuff, then you got to abide by every rule that you want to, but I don't think there's anything really making you not do something to the house.
I just thought maybe you'd know. I've always wondered about that. I've heard that.
Sure.
Once it's put on the historic register, that it's pretty difficult to.
It could be, yeah.
Remodel the exterior, certainly. Thank you. I've been through that property. It needs an owner.
It does.
It's starting to look a little dilapidated.
I can tell you anything about the whole house. I used to take care of Betty Best that owned it, so I, that's, I know the house real well inside and out. It does need a lot of work on the outside, and it's just, that's what I'm worried about, is somebody that's going to start something and they can't make it look right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the conditional use permit with the eight stipulations.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number seven. Is there any discussion on item number seven?
Madam Chair, I guess a couple of questions come to mind. The gentleman that came up asked about what happens if this venture fails, and I guess we could ask staff what's allowed in an RS2 zone in terms of uses. Is that, does that allow multifamily?
RS2 allows up to two units on the property as a duplex or attached units. If they wanted to go higher, they'd have to get a conditional use permit.
And then in response to Kenny's question about historic structures, I think the gentleman was right. If you're receiving any sort of assistance, then you need to follow the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitating the property. If this is considered a contributing property to the overall district, if changes are made, the risk you run is that you change enough of the fabric of the home that it is changed from a contributing home within the district to a non-contributing home within the district. So.
And what's the penalty for that, Meredith?
None. If you get enough homes in a district that are non-contributing, you might lose your status as a historic district.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number seven carries. Item number eight, staff report, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Dave Loveland, and I'll be representing staff on this and later items. Item number eight is a final development plan in subarea A of the Brooks Crossing Plan Development District to construct an apartment complex. The applicant is requesting approval in order to begin construction on a 260-unit complex. The area in size is just under 15 acres. Location is at East 54th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. As far as a budding zoning and land uses to the north is the RS2 Residential District with future low-density residential. To the south is subarea B of Brooks Crossing, which would be for retention, detention, and the C4 District, which is for future commercial. To the east is subarea A of the Brooks Crossing, which is a future apartment complex, and to the west is subarea A of the Brooks Crossing, which is vacant. Staff considers the proposed use compatible with minor conflict, and that needs to be paid attention to against a single-family home, a single-family home zoning on the north property line. The Brooks Crossing Plan Development District was created in February of 2008 and revised to incorporate additional land area in July 2009, or 2008. Since its creation, several final development plans for multifamily residential complexes have been approved and constructed. A minor amendment for the subject property was approved by the Planning Commission in August of 2011 to reduce the density requirement from one unit per 2,500 square feet to one unit per 2,475 square feet. In addition to that major change, that minor change, there was also a component of that approval that removed some of the other regulations as far as that had been originally in place on there. As I noted, the location is at South Sycamore Avenue and East 54th Street. We go into the land use and comprehensive plan analysis. The applicants have generally met the requirements and intent of both the comprehensive plan and subarea regulation. Staff encourages the applicant to collaborate with developers of the property to the east on a buffer along the north property line for consistency. A 30-foot landscape setback is required along the north property line per subarea A regulations. Currently, transit services and access to stores, office, and personal services are not within a pedestrian distance from the subject property. The applicant should be aware that development of residential services may take several years to occur. A scheduled transit route service is not currently planned for this location. Because the subject application conforms to the intent of the Brooks Crossing Subarea Regulations and the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan, staff is recommending approval of the final development plan. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Are there any questions of Dave? No? Thank you. Is the petitioner here, please?
Good evening. Lanny Orger here, representing the applicant, which is Billis at Canyon Creek. In response to one of the concerns that Dave had mentioned regarding being considered of a single family to the north, we have maintained the 30-foot barrier, landscape barrier, excuse me, landscape buffer to the north. We've also met with the neighbor to the north on several occasions, including as recently as a week ago, and addressed his concerns. We've aligned garages along the north edge of the property with a couple of exceptions where we have some parking, and we've assured him that we will buffer the parking with the required hedges or fencing as required in that area.
Thank you. Any questions, Lanny? Thank you, Lanny.
Thanks.
Anybody from the audience here to speak on this item?
Gary Har, representing Eastern Hills Properties. We own the property to the north of this. We did meet with Lanny and their owners the other day, looked at the plan a little more closely, and I think we'd like to see, there's one of their buildings, they're three-story high buildings, is 30 feet from the property line. So I got a three-story building 30 feet behind the property line, a twin-home lot, I believe it is. I'd like to see them move that back, and then also a little more detail in as far as where the landscape buffer is. We'd like to see a fence put on the property line of something of that nature, just to try and mitigate the effect of this to our houses. In the long-term history of this, this is the fourth or fifth revision of this development plan. They're not the owners. The owners have changed, so on and so forth. So we started out with all of this in July with the minor amendment they did, took it from four-plex buildings at a maximum to allowing what they're doing now. So we've given up quite a bit, and I'd just like to see a couple of those buildings moved a little bit. One building for sure, clear to the east, and then if we could get some sort of fence guaranteed. I think they were talking about putting a hedge, which is great, but it's only this tall for several years, you know. So I'd like to see a fence along that property.
Okay. Any questions for Gary?
Gary, you used to own this property?
No.
Okay.
No.
I'll have to check. I think staff could help me here. Is this a PD? Will the petitioner not have to bring in a final development plan?
This is the final development.
And the changes that I'm requesting, you know, we talked briefly about them in our meeting, but we didn't, it didn't get changed on the final development plan, and I just want to make sure it does get changed. I would just like to see the one building move back a bit, and then the requirement of a fence.
Any other questions to Gary? Thank you, Gary. I will.
Jeff, I'm, excuse me, Madam Chair? We're pulling up the exhibits for the final development plan, and Mr. Dunlap's question was, a rezoned a planned development district, then anything basically residential or non-residential or multifamily that comes back through the process has to go through this board for a final development plan, and then you have the final decision to approve or deny or re-defer the item.
That's what I was looking for, was a layout of this development, but that still has to be brought down and back to us.
Nope. This is, this is that item right now. They have the lot layout.
We did see the. I thought we did see a plan.
We did. And it's part of the exhibits that we have, but it just didn't come up on the overhead screen, so they're bringing up those exhibits.
Does someone have it in their packet?
He's getting it.
Madam Chair, there's no site plan in the packet, and so it's hard to respond to Gary's concerns unless we can see specifically what they're talking about.
Looks like Lanny has one too, Jeff.
Yeah, you can put it on the overhead.
This is, this is part of the information that was submitted to the city in our final development plan. It was provided, we just don't have it in the packet.
They were just trying to fool you, Kenny. Jeff, very tricky.
My objective is to.
Wait till you're the chair, Kenny, and we'll pull all kinds of.
That's what I was looking for, Jeff.
This is all Sycamore Avenue. And.
This is all Sycamore Avenue and East 54th Street and South Side. The project or the structure that Mr. Har's request referring to is this one right here. Lanny mentioned that there's a 30-foot buffer to the back before we get to the... It's a landscape buffer next to the single-family lots. But this is the one structure. This is the structure. All the other...
Steve, other units are aligned south of the parking, except for this one in the northwest corner.
Thank you, Jeff. That helps me a great deal, so now that's laid out.
We apologize for not having that exhibit. We'll correct that, or you'll hold it against us.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Jeff, where is, do you know where the fence that Gary mentioned is?
It's the property line fence, correct?
All the way behind the garages or just where there's open parking?
To my understanding, that was still being discussed today. I didn't know for sure if they had agreed on the location from starting point to finish point. That'd be a better question for Lanny.
Okay.
Lanny, can you come back up maybe just to clarify a few things?
We met with Gary a week ago and shared this plan with him. At that time, everything was acceptable to him. He did, at that point, indicate that that building on the northwest, he said that's a little bit of a concern to him, but because it essentially butts up to a retention pond or pond area, as well as office or a twin-home lot up in the corner, it wasn't necessarily a concern of his. He was also, he also did indicate that his concern along the north property was, we don't have garages, but there's two areas where we have parking that essentially would direct headlights, et cetera, into those lots. And that's where we verbally agreed that we'll take care of that with either a hedge or a fence in those two areas.
Lanny, would you be opposed if we stipulated a fence in those two areas as one of the conditions?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I think we should maybe, there's some things that we should probably discuss after we have a motion, but...
I'll look for one.
I'd make the motion to approve the final development plan with the stipulation that fencing be added behind those open parking areas where you have potential for light, headlights to shine into a neighborhood lot. I'm not that concerned about that three-story building because of its orientation. It's very minimal facing the end of the building and the fact that it backs up to an office lot. All in all, I really like the plan because so many that we see are just Barrick-style arrangement, and this is quite refreshing, so I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Can we have further discussion on item number eight? Meredith, I would, your second as well. I know this land has been through a lot of different changes, but I think this is certainly one of the most appealing sites of this nature and this size that we have seen. I think there is maybe potential for a little, and if the owner's willing to stipulate to a fence in that area, I think that that would be appropriate. And again, seeing how the, it certainly helps to see clarification on how the building's oriented towards that, and seeing as it appears that this is going to go before the housing, I think it'll be clear that people know what, I mean, will come behind them. I think it looks like a nice, nice development.
So, Madam Chair, do we need to put the height of the fence and the length of the fence and all of that in our condition?
Maybe, Jeff, you can clarify for us on, maybe we could have that be through the approval of the...
Right. If you just put the stipulation condition on there for the fence, then staff can work through it, as well as they have to get a fence permit, so they wouldn't be able to put too short it to tell.
And you have further discussion? So we have a motion and a second for item number eight with one stipulation. Meredith, would you just say the stipulation once more for the record?
That a fence be added at the property line or whatever's allowable at those areas where there are no garages, but the parking is open and headlights could shine into a neighboring lot.
And for the planning staff to approve that?
And for the planning staff approval of the fence location and configuration.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for item number eight with one stipulation. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item number eight carries. Item number nine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apologies for the technical error on that last one. The applicants did submit the same exhibit file, and evidently it was misplaced in our compilation, so... Moving on to item number nine. Item number nine is a final development plan in subarea B of the Brooks Crossing Plan Development District to construct an apartment complex, and this is located just to the east of the property that was just under discussion. Again, the general location is East 54th Street, east of Sycamore Avenue and near-adjacent to South Dubuque Avenue. The area in size is just over five acres and is zoned within the Brooks Crossing Plan Development District. Abutting zoning and land use to the north again is the RS2 residential district. To the south is subarea B of Brooks Crossing. To the east is the RD residential district, and to the west is the subarea B of Brooks Crossing. Again, we find the use compatible with minor conflict against the single-family residential to the north. As I noted in the history, on the last item, the Brooks Crossing Plan Development District was created in February 2008 and revised to incorporate additional land area in July 2008. Since its creation, several final development plans for multifamily residential complexes have been approved and constructed. You'll note that throughout the final development plan, the applicants have met setbacks, parking, and have located their landscaping and building locations on the site. They have not yet provided signage or lighting plans, but will be required to do so at building plan check. The applicants have also generally met the requirements and intent of both the comprehensive plan and subarea regulations. Again, we encourage the applicant to collaborate with developers of the property to the west on a buffer along the north property line for consistency purposes. Again, we have the same note on transit service and access to stores, office, and personal service, and the applicant should be aware that it may take several years for some of those services to be available. Because the subject application conforms to the intent of the Brooks Crossing Subarea Regulations and the Shakesew Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan, we are recommending approval of this final development plan as well. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here?
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Damian Grebel. I'm with Eric Hart Griffin. It's 300 North Dakota Avenue, Suite 114, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57104. I am here to represent the owner on this petition. If you can, the site layout that you had in your packets, I would just like to walk you through the layout. I think what we have here is an efficient layout for the buildings that we've provided. These buildings are two-story buildings. They're no closer than 90 feet from the north property line. We do provide a one-story clubhouse building, and that is over 35 feet from the north property line. I believe in this subarea, we do not have the 30-foot buffer along the north property line, but we do respect that with this development, and we do provide that buffer. We have internal parking, as requested, within the subarea. We do have a few parking stalls at the clubhouse that do go to the north, but I think you can see that the majority of the stalls are blocked or headlights would be blocked by the clubhouse as well at that point. Other than that, mainly just turning movements into the garages on the sides of the building is what we have for the drive-ins. We show two play areas on this development, and all play areas and buildings, parking, will be connected with sidewalks. Sidewalks will meet ADA requirements as well, from handicap building units to your mailboxes, your play areas, your trash dumpsters within the development. You can see we have plenty of open space. We do have an overhead utility on the east side of the property, but again, ample open space on the north edge of this development, as well as on the south edge adjacent to the street. This is a smoke-free housing development. No smoking will be allowed in this development. As far as the clubhouse, the uses, the intended use, if any gatherings were to be held, would be for small parties, candle parties, or other parties that people do together for. No alcohol will be allowed to be used in this clubhouse, so simply small gatherings at this clubhouse. We will connect to existing city utilities, and they will be made available. We'll ensure proper drainage on the site. As you can see, our drainage would be from the, generally from the northwest to the east and from the north to the south as well, back to the existing street. I spoke with Mr. Har last Friday, and I did want to touch base with him on this development. At that time, he had already received a copy of the development from the city. When we spoke at that time, he had stated to me, he thought it was a good-looking development. It was a good-looking site plan. He did express concerns to me about the overall density of this project and the project adjacent to it, but it was my understanding that that was not any concerns for this particular development, but just the past history with this property. Other than that, I believe this proposed plan matches the intended land use per the subarea regulations. At this point in time, we do not show a fence, and I do not believe we're required for this area to have a landscape buffer on the north, but I do know that these property owners or these developers are more than willing to work with Mr. Har to the north to come up with a landscape buffer that would be acceptable to both parties. And other than that, I would be open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Damian. Any questions, Damian? No. Thank you. Anybody from the audience?
Gary Har, representing Eastern Hills again. Same type of thing here. Once again, we do have residential north of this, so we've got a clubhouse, a community house. Are there hours for that? Because that's going to be in 35 feet from somebody's backyard again. That was one of the questions that I had. The concept of the plan, everything, I liked the looks of the buildings. There's two or three things I didn't like about it. You've got some entrances, the front main entrance for some of the units is on the north side, so when you're in your backyard and you're looking at the front yard of someone else's house behind you, I didn't know how much effect that was going to have on anything. And, you know, kind of what I would like to see is move it south a little bit, maybe, or if they could flip it and put the clubhouse to the south. But again, it goes back to that same thing that we were dealing with on the last item. I'm trying to buffer the houses from this. I'm the buffer all of a sudden, so I need a fence, a berm, something. At one point in time, before this was taken out and put into subarea B, there was a buffer that went along here, and it, through all the changes, got taken out. So we would like, now, obviously, they respected that. They stayed 30 feet from the property line, which is great, but I'd still like to see it on the plans, and I'd like to see a fence again, you know? Those are the kind of things that I'm looking at here. This parcel of property was initially brought forward in this last past summer as part of the previous project. It was phase three of the last project that we talked about. And when we talked to them and allowed, you know, went along with their zoning, it was in the understanding that this parcel would be four-plexes. It would be taken back and not used for eight-plex units or whatever. Now, the density here is low enough, they got enough open area to where probably density-wise is pretty good, but it's still an eight-plex building and still a lot bigger than what we had, you know, sat around a table and talked about. Unfortunately, I didn't get it wrote down, and I didn't get it on all the paperwork, so here we are. Now, all I can ask for is, you know, what are the hours in that clubhouse? Can we keep them restricted? Can we keep a fence up? Can we put up a berm? What can we do to buffer it from those houses? This one here, the houses to the north are not currently planted. Previous one, the number eight, I have house lots that have been there for three years for sale, and I can't sell them because no one can tell us what's going back there. So I'm hoping that the apartments going back there will help sell those. But currently, because of the jumping from plan to plan to plan over the last five years, we have no way to tell someone what's going to be in their backyard. And I have no way to know that this is what's actually going to get built here. If this is approved, I have no assurance that this is what's going to get built. And every time that we've agreed to something here, we've gotten bit, and they take a little bit more away from us. So I'd just like to see the fence and some of the stuff put on the plans, you know? That's all I'm looking for.
Any questions, Gary? No. Thank you, Gary. Anybody else from the audience here to speak on this item? No? I'll look for commission action then. Item number nine.
Madam Chair, I'd make a recommendation for approval of item number nine.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of item number nine. Do we have any discussion?
Madam Chair, I think that we may want to consider what Damian has offered and Gary has requested in terms of a buffer. I'm not sure how we quantify that. It's probably easy to let that fall back on the shoulders of the planning staff again to sort out what's an acceptable landscape buffer. In terms of fencing, that's something different here, I suspect.
That's correct. You can have a stipulation on here. Well, first, I'll explain what the stipulations can be. First, you can say that the final landscape plan to be submitted to planning staff for the approval of the director or designee, which would be what your condition would be. Secondly, you've got the fencing. You put the stipulation on the last one for the fencing to ensure that headlights wouldn't cross over into the residential property. I don't know that that's as much of a concern at this location with the proposed layout. You know, fencing is required for parking lots against residential property. You can certainly add it if that's what you'd like to do, but... And as far as a procedural issue, you've got a motion and a second on the table right now, so that if you wanted to add more conditions, you need to have a substitute motion with the conditions, and then you'll approve that, and then you'll vote on the main motion.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if that's the case, I'd certainly be willing to make a substitute motion that we approve this final development plan with a stipulation related to the landscape buffer, the need for a landscape buffer, and fencing, a second stipulation related to the need for some fencing to screen the future residence, residential lots to the north from the parking that faces the community center.
So we have a substitute motion with two stipulations. Do we have a second to that? So we have a motion and a second to a substitute motion with two stipulations. All those in favor of the substitute motion with the two stipulations. Actually, I'll look for further discussion on it first. Any further discussion on it? No. Then I'll look for approval of the substitute motion. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? So we have a substitute... So we have a substitute motion that carries... I'm sorry?
Good morning.
Okay. So, on the motion for item number nine, all those in favor, and we're in the affirmative on this, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we're... I am confused now. Now we have two motions on the same piece of property.
No, wait. I'll let the city attorney on this one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please give me a moment to consult Roberts rules by me. Thank you.
Too bad we don't have any music to play in the background.
I'm going to do something I normally don't do and go off memory alone, but I believe the substitute motion just takes the place of the pending main motion, and you, since you approved the substitute motion, you do not need to make any further votes on the main motion that was already transplanted with the substitute motion. I'm looking at Mr. Pearson, and I would... He's concurring from his legislative experience.
The substitute motion is a preferential motion. It takes place in the original motion.
Great. So we're done with item number... Good, let's move on. Item number 10. Staff report, please.
10 was consent. We're on to item number 11.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Steve Randall, Planning Office. Item 11 is an application for rezoning. The applicant is Dave Van Toll, Vanderhags Incorporated, and Cliff Avenue Properties and Westman Investments of South Dakota. The request is to rezone I-1 Light Industrial District to I-2 General Industrial District to allow expansion of outdoor storage for an existing business. The outdoor storage is related to a truck salvage business. The area is 16 acres, but currently the existing use is vacant. The applicant is located in an area that has existing industrial development, and the applicant has actually zoned I-2 General Industrial, which allows the salvage operation principally an outdoor storage area that's associated with the business of taking in vehicles for salvage. The applicant is proposing to expand an existing outdoor storage, and the site concept plan that you have in your information packet is provided by the applicant, shows street vacation, property line setbacks, landscaping, and perimeter screen fencing associated with that outdoor storage. No other improvements are provided, and there is a section of the land that's reserved to the north for future development in the I-2 district. So our general requirements relate to I-2 General Industrial District and the zoning ordinance, excuse me, for allowed uses. Property is directly accessible to 54 Street North on the north side, and each 52nd Street through the middle of the property is proposed to be vacated from National Avenue to North Jessica Avenue. North National Avenue, 33-foot right-of-way, is proposed to be vacated from East 50th Street North to East 54th Street North, and that's the only section of National Avenue that would be proposed for vacation. Now, the site currently has native ground cover and a moderate drainage pattern to the south. There are no substantial vegetation to be preserved, although there is a small tree grove at the southeast or southwest corner of the property, and the applicant has indicated that that be removed. Plans are drawn to scale, and we have a complete application for your consideration. Staff notes that the classification in the zoning ordinance doesn't quite fit the defined business. However, we have indicated that a conditional use permit will be required, and the applicant has to come back to you for that review and approval. For the storage, wrecking, dismantling, salvage, collection, processing, purchase, sale, or exchange of abandoned or discarded vehicles, goods, waste, and scrap materials, including but not limited to two or more abandoned or inoperable motor vehicles, glass, tires, appliances, machinery, or automotive and mechanical parts. Really, the applicant's business deals only with trucks, and so we're not so concerned with all these other things, but we do have them in a classification that we can control and put conditions for approval on that use in the future. There is a cost recovery due if the property ever connects to a sanitary sewer, and a post-construction BMP is required for the property, as indicated on the site plan. Staff also notes that the major transportation plan in this area needs to be discussed with the applicant. Current engineering plan calls for National Avenue to be kept open and right-of-way improvements be applied for. We're willing to work with the applicant on that situation. We do have a letter in your addendum packet from a related business in the area who's concerned about any vacation of National Avenue. The two parties have been discussing that situation as late as today, and the applicant may be able to address that for you. Other than that, the submitted plan is complete, and staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Madam Chair, Steve, the business exists now to the west, and so this rezone will allow this applicant to expand their business.
To the east.
To the east. As a planning commission, whether this succeeds or fails really does not act upon anything related to vacation of streets.
That's correct. Vacation of streets is a separate matter that does go through a public approval process. So that'll take care of itself. The only question is whether the applicant could live with the expansion of their business if the street is not vacated.
And that's something city council would ultimately decide.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Any other questions to Steve? Thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here?
Dave Van Toll from Vanderhags Incorporated.
Any questions to Dave? Nope. It's pretty easy. Thank you, Dave.
It was easy. I said that was...
Oh, yeah. It was very...
Anybody else here to speak on this item? No. I'll look for commission action on item number 11.
Madam Chair, I'll move for approval.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval of item number 11. Any discussion? Having none? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Same sign? Item number 11 carries. Item number 12.
Good evening again. Item number 12 is a request for rezoning from the RA-2 Residential District to the Gigglebees Redevelopment Plan Development District for the allowed uses listed within the district regulations. The applicant is requesting approval of the planned development district in order to allow residential building on-site. The area in question is about, is just under one acre in size. As I noted, the existing zoning is RA-2 Residential, which is a higher-density residential-level zoning. Abiding zoning and land uses to the north is the RA-2 Residential District and the C-2 General Business District, and that encompasses off-site parking lot. To the south is the RA-2 Residential District and the C-2 General Business District, which is off-site parking lot and an office. To the east is the C-2 General Commercial District, which is vacant at the moment, and to the west is the RA-2 Residential District, where single-family residential exists on that site. Staff notes that there is a potential incompatibility dealing with the single-family residential, and that the applicant needs to be aware of the incompatibility potential and address that through final site design. The proposed regulations are noted at the end of your staff report, and SubArea A will be governed in general by the RA-2 Residential District. The location of the site is at the northwest corner of West 14th Street and South Minnesota Avenue, specifically though along South Spring Avenue between 13th and 14th Streets. The applicant is still working on final site designs at this moment. What you're considering is a zoning change, and that because it's a planned development district, it would be required to bring forward a final development plan at a later time. As far as our analysis, redevelopment opportunities within the city's core area are encouraged by the city as a matter of policy related to the Pettigrew Heights Neighborhood Plan and the Shaped Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. At the same time, the city recognizes that typical mitigation or transition techniques are limited due to density, small sites, or other factors present in the core area. To address those issues, staff has worked with the applicant and developer to ensure that mitigation of visual scale and reduced setbacks are completed. The regulations proposed reflect that purpose and additional opportunities for project evaluation will be provided at the time of the final development plan. The applicants have been advised to meet with representatives of the Pettigrew Heights Neighborhood and adjacent property owners. I believe that they've conducted a neighborhood meeting, and they'd be available to discuss the outcome of that meeting. The property owner listed is in the process of acquiring the property. In the meantime, staff has requested that the current property owners within the subject property provide a statement of concurrence or a copy of assigned application stating their understanding, so the applicants will be able to discuss where they are in that acquisition process. The regulations proposed differ from the standing zoning district, from the standard zoning district in the following way. SubArea A is the reduced front yard setbacks from 25 feet to 15 feet along Spring Avenue and 15 feet along 13th Avenue, reduce the rear yard to 0 feet from 25 feet to reflect shared nature of the site and the project, increase the maximum height from 45 feet to 50 feet, and added structural and site design requirements to ensure final development plan will meet the intent of transitions and reducing the impact of the development to adjacent properties. Because the subject application provides effective mitigation of land use conflicts and generally meets the policies of the Shaped Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning with the regulations as noted in your staff report. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions to Dave?
Madam Chair, Dave, who developed the SubArea regulations, in particular, number six? The other regulations?
The other regulations, both staff and the developer worked together on those.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
David, you had requested a letter from the current owner.
Yeah.
Did you receive that?
Well, I believe that they actually own the property at this point. I think at the time of the drafting of the report, there was still some property negotiation. The applicant will have to discuss where they are in that process.
Thank you.
Any other questions to Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here, please?
Good evening. Chris Torkelson, 1408 West Waterstone Drive. To answer your question, Kenny, we actually have verbal discussions or multiple discussions with David King with First Midwest Bank. The latest was...
Right before Christmas? Last week?
Okay. Sorry. And we don't actually have something from him here this evening. I actually got this information at about 4:30 today, when I was coming downtown, so I didn't realize that I actually needed that till I read it when I got down here. I've sent David an email as we're sitting here, hoping he would respond to give approval. But we've discussed it multiple times as far as purchase screen and everything like that. He sees no issues with it. We've worked, you know, to get all the way to this point as far as how much land they're going to provide us, how we're going to work together as far as various things with the development, and that's kind of where we stand today. With respect to neighborhood meeting, we had one just on Monday, Tuesday evening, along with Affordable Housing Solutions at Sioux Falls Housing, put out a letter to roughly 40 people within the neighborhood and had, I think, about eight to 10 show up. We did not receive what I would believe to be any real opposition. I think it was more questions, curiosity. We provided them with the site plan that you see there per our discussions with the ownership, and also provided them with updated elevations that you saw there, spoke to or with them about, you know, some of their concerns and how we might caveat those things, and I think all were really kind of pleased with what it is that we were showcasing. Also, to note, we do own the house that still exists there, which is probably about 45% of that property there itself, probably 40%.
Okay. Any questions of Chris?
Chris, is this going to be one building?
Yeah. As far as, what we're doing is the one building there that you see really on the northwest corner, closest to 13th Street, along 13th and Spring. That's the multifamily unit that we're planning to do there.
Your application refers to the law of mixed-use development of two buildings.
I didn't know what that...
I need to clarify that. That was incorrect. That was an earlier proposal that we discussed with them, and then that got in there and wasn't taken out. Sorry about that.
David, while you're here, David, if I may, Madam Chair, staff had recommended a deferral on this without something from that current owner.
I think given the nature of their discussions, we just need to have a letter before the city council meeting.
You feel comfortable?
Yep.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Any additional questions of Chris? Thank you. Anybody from the audience here to speak on this item?
See, I'll be very brief, but my name is Brad Towkin, and I do live in the neighborhood Pettigrew Heights, and I know that a few times, you know, several of our neighbors have wanted to know about green space, and the plan right there is not very clear, at least as far as I can tell what is what, but I know that's a concern for a lot of us, so I don't know if that's, you know, since we're doing a land use, you know, if we could, you know, say that we're encouraging some kind of playground or some kind of green space for our neighborhood because it really, really needs that. I think that's something that, you know, at least can be discussed. So that was my only comment or concern in regards to this project. Otherwise, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Any questions for Brad?
Madam Chair, Brad, the next step in this process is for this applicant to come back with a final development plan, and I would encourage you to get together with the petitioner either before the commission meeting, when they do present that final development plan, because that's when we'll get a better look at landscaping and green areas and things like that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Anybody else here to speak on this item? I'll look for commission action on item number 12.
Madam Chair, I'd move for approval of item number 12.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second for approval of item number 12. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, discussion, probably anybody in the audience or anybody on the commission here. I'm wondering how the construction of this new building is going to be in sync with what currently is the Gigglebees building. We don't really know what's going to happen to that yet, and I'm wondering what kind of, you know, focus that someone could give us of where and how that building is going to fit in to this new project.
When we met with David last week after our meeting, he sent us four different renderings of what they were kind of imagining that existing building to be, you know. I think they plan on, obviously, rehabbing the building and rehabbing the exterior to give it a look. At that time, we did have our architect with, and again, they're not settled as a group... At that time, we did have our architect with, and again, they're not settled as a group cohesively on one particular rendering, but we did have the discussion that we would like to possibly try to really create a development as a whole and try to make some connectivity with our building and with theirs, and it would probably be more us changing our look to adhere to theirs, and so I think that's just something that we want to work through. As we do that, and I think some of the discussions that we had when we had our neighborhood meeting on Tuesday is to continue these meetings with Pettigrew Neighborhood and try to really gain their input and feedback as we go through this whole process. So if there's anything that we may change slightly, it might be just to kind of keep some cohesiveness.
I believe that I either read or saw on television news that they were taking out the interior of that building, trying to determine whether it was structurally feasible to do something with it. Do you know any of those results?
That's our understanding. I don't know anything, any further information that would say it wouldn't be.
I frankly don't see much room for a green space. As the gentleman before you came up here, if this building goes up and if that one stays and something else goes in there, there, it wouldn't be much of a green space left. Availability would be negligible.
We do provide a 32-by-56 play area for the tenants themselves. I think there's fairly substantial green space off of Spring Street to the east of the project, 40 feet by probably around almost 300, you know, with the exception of probably those two approaches on the south there. While that's maybe not real adequate, it's really a challenge in the downtown area.
Frankly, I don't think it's big enough for a park.
No, and, you know, that was one of the concerns that one of the residents brought up at our neighborhood meeting, Steve Nats, I believe, and, you know, I think we kind of spoke to hopefully future opportunities as maybe things get further developed in the Pettigrew area and neighborhood where, you know, it's a bit of a challenge with the close proximity to Minnesota Avenue on this particular site, but I think it's everyone's objective to maybe try to identify opportunities for that. I think our biggest challenge is we're really limited by what, in a sense, the bank is willing to offer us for our, you know, as far as square footage of our land, and, you know, some of the original designs that we did have, we had a little bit larger of a play area and green space, knowing that that was such a big concern, and so we're kind of trying to adhere to all the requirements that are in place for us to really comply and still be able to provide the adequate housing that we're trying to achieve.
I was just trying to get a feel for what your crystal ball was.
Yeah, well, we hope, we remain optimistic, and again, we just want to continue to work with the Pettigrew Heights Neighborhood and the city and, you know, all others that might be down there developing large masses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd have one more question for staff, if possible. David, when I look at that Giggelby's building, you indicate that's a 12,692-square-foot building, or at least this particular plan I'm looking at does.
Okay.
Uh, which works out to having a requirement for that building of 42 parking spots. Your, a note here says it's showing 58. Can I assume that that parking goes along Fourteenth Street, which would be part of the Giggelby building whenever it's completed?
That's correct.
And that leaves plenty of parking for the apartment building?
I think they're still trying to work out some of their final property boundary where they go on that, and so, you know, the final determination of parking, we're going to, you know, we'll be taking a look at that at their final development plan stage, too.
Okay.
At this point, you know, like I said, it's, we're at the zoning stage. Parking is a consideration. They noted what, you know, the Giggelby's building would require, and so...
What would a requirement for parking for an apartment building like this be?
It depends on the ratio of the number of bedrooms and the size of those bedrooms. And so, you know, at one or two-bedroom apartment buildings are required to have one and a half stalls. Three-bedroom units are required to have two stalls. And so, you know, as that ratio plays out in their final development of their plans, that's where we'll end up.
Can you help critique that and take a look at that?
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you, David.
Yep.
Any other questions to staff while we have Dave up here?
I have a real quick question for David, and that is, is the Giggelby building a part of the PD?
No.
So the only thing we're really dealing with tonight is the multifamily.
Right.
And the C2 zoning for Giggelby's is there and in place and will remain in place.
That's correct, unless they file for a rezoning application for some reason.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Maybe we can go back to that slide that shows what... No, more.
What you're looking at is a...
The boundary.
Yeah.
There we go.
Right there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion? I'll look for commission action on item number 12. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sigh. Item number 12 carries. Thank you. Item number 13, TIF District. Erica, we always like to see you.
Thank you. Erica Beck with the Community Development Department. If possible, I'd like to present items 13 and 14 together, but they would require separate action.
Sounds good.
Just to give you a little bit of background on this project overall, before we talk about what's being proposed, the city issued an RFP for redevelopment of this site in late 2010. We received one proposal for the construction of a hotel, and that was from River Greenway Hospitality LLC, which consists of Paul Haag and Craig Lloyd. The intent of the, that those developers is to construct a 100-plus hotel room in place of the city-owned surface parking lot and river ramp on the east bank downtown. Typical of many sites that we deal with downtown, this site has a number of extraordinary development costs associated with it. For example, we can, actually in partnership with Lloyd's, we conducted soil borings on the site, and there's at least a minimum of $700,000 in remediation costs associated with the site. Again, we see that in many downtown sites. Other extraordinary costs that would be reimbursable through the proposed TIF district include demolition of the river ramp, for example, any site preparation that would have to be done as part of this project, demolition of additional existing structures on the site. Those are all typical costs that we see with these types of downtown projects. Specifically, I just want to make note of this aerial photo, which is now out of date, of course, because of the construction that's occurring on the south side of the Scholman's Lot where the CNA building is being constructed. But, you know, in terms of the vision overall for the east bank, that was really defined many, many years ago, and most recently by our 2015 Downtown Plan, where we talk about opportunities for redevelopment occurring on the east bank. Again, that started many years ago with the renovation of the Eighth and Railroad Center on the east bank, the demolition of the Zip feed mill in 2005, the construction of Sharapa Place, and the construction just starting last year with CNA Surety. And we really anticipate that continuing forward, especially because of this project moving forward and the excitement that a new hotel brings to downtown and just the city in general. And then, again, just because of the other types of projects that we're looking to do downtown and specifically on the east bank with the railroad relocation project. So just in general, that kind of gives you an idea, I think, of what we're trying to do in terms of creating that vision for downtown and specifically for the east bank. What you're being asked to approve tonight is the boundary for the TIF district and then the plan for the TIF district. Specific to the boundary, I'll just note, this is kind of an odd district shape, so I want to explain that just in general if I could a little bit. You'll probably know in 2010, you were asked to consider the development of a TIF district boundary for TIF 10, which is a CNA project. That TIF boundary is just to the south of this, so that boundary that's on the south of the proposed TIF 14 lines up with TIF 10. They do not overlap, they're just adjacent to one another. And then also, I wanted to note, too, that the western boundary of this does not include the west bank of the River Greenway where the river ramp sits because we anticipate looking at future development within that area, and that could potentially require its own TIF district being proposed in the future, just because we have included that within our overall River Greenway master plan, and so hopefully we'll be able to do those types of improvements with incentive from another TIF district in the future. So that's why it doesn't include the actual west bank. You're also being asked to consider the plan for the district. Specifically to note on that, the total project costs overall are probably going to total over $23 million, and that includes both public and private construction. So including the River Greenway project that the city is moving forward with, Phase Two of that next year, once the river ramp is removed, that project will total $2.5 million, and then just over $20 million is associated with the total project construction for the hotel that's being proposed. The base value of the district, we anticipate equaling just under $1 million, roughly $980,000. The value after project completion is anticipated to total over $9 million, and we are projecting that the district will last up to 20 years, which is allowed by state statute. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those, and then as well, Mr. Craig Lloyd is in the audience from Lloyd Companies and can respond to specific questions that you might have on the proposed construction of the hotel. I'll just note as well, the image that you see before you is what we utilized during our public award of the project on November 1st, and so what you see is a potential Hilton Garden Inn franchise on the east bank downtown, sitting right on the River Greenway, so we're very excited about that opportunity. The developers, Mr. Haag and Mr. Lloyd, just submitted a franchise application to Hilton Garden Inn on December 28th, I believe, and we're very excited about that. We had an opportunity to meet with the representative from the Hilton Garden franchise. They were very excited about the things that we have happening in Sioux Falls and specifically downtown with Phase One of our River Greenway project and just all the other exciting private development that's occurring. So we're looking very forward to receiving a response back from them, as I know the developers are as well. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, and again, Mr. Lloyd is in the audience as well.
Thank you, Erica. Any questions of Erica?
Madam Chair, Erica, on item 14, the plan, the list of the costs or where the dollar, TIF dollars would go, is that a, is there a typo there where it says financing costs at 3% of 2.2 million, total 1,134?
Yeah, I apologize for that. That should have been the total project costs in general.
Yeah. And then, as I look at this rendering and see that, well, $500,000 is set aside for the River Greenway development, what I see on the image there would be a great deal more than $500,000. Is there a plan for the city to become involved in that development beyond the $500,000?
We actually have budgeted in the CIP for this year completion of the Phase Two River Greenway project. By no means do we anticipate necessarily a total reimbursement for that project through this TIF.
Okay.
This TIF district will not provide enough increment to do both what we need in terms of covering the extraordinary costs associated with the development and the public costs, but because we already have that budgeted and are moving forward with it anyway, we're not anticipating being reimbursed for those costs.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Erica, in your presentation here, we talk about the city has five active TIF districts. The city has six non-active slash dissolved districts. Can we assume that the ones in the 80s or 90s have run their course and are now being taxed at the county at full and true?
That's correct. Anything that you see in the staff report that's listed as a dissolved or terminated district, that means that it has run its course. We typically always project those districts to last 20 years because our projections we based on very conservative numbers because we don't ever want to have a non-successful district. But just to give you an example, a couple of the districts that have been dissolved, they only lasted 12 years just because, you know, good things are happening in Sioux Falls. That assessed valuation is increasing faster than what we anticipated it to, and so basically what happens at that point is that we then dissolve the district before that 20-year period is up.
The four TIFs in '05, '06, '07, and '08, can we anticipate those are projects that never made it or just never got done? Are those TIF districts still in place?
No, those are terminated.
In other words, if it's not used?
Correct. TIF 4 was for the original post office relocation that we anticipated happening, and for various reasons, those projects did not occur.
Thank you, Erica.
Mm-hmm. Erica, can you speak to how a TIF boundary is determined to include property that's not part of the redevelopment, specifically the DeWitt Design building that's included in that?
Correct. We work with the developer in terms of identifying what costs they have associated with the project that we consider extraordinary or those that are reimbursable through TIF. We then look at ways that we can, you know, utilize the property surrounding the district, if possible, to reimburse for those project costs. What we did with this project was, you know, we have worked with the owner of DeWitt Designs a couple of times because we have a facadesman on the property and several other ways. We've worked with them for historic tax credit purposes, and so what we had done was requested that they consider being within the district. There's really no impact to that specific property owner in terms of doing that, but what happens is when they come off the historic tax credit rolls in 2015, the increment that's then generated from them and their property valuation would go to reimbursing for these specific costs as identified in the plan.
Wouldn't that bring up a question, Erica? If that's included in this TIF and the money is used for this TIF, and let's say five years from now, that particular owner of that building wanted to do something, he would not then be allowed to, would he? If it's already included into this TIF?
Not necessarily. This is similar to what we did within TIF 12, if you remember that, just a couple of months ago, and that included the DeKalb Lofts as part of Uptown. We had a much larger district proposed at that time. It allows us really to work with those additional property owners within the district if they have things that would be eligible for reimbursement through the TIF. This property owner, we don't anticipate that happening.
I'm just using that as an example. If we could pick out something else, I suspect, but...
Right. If they're not within the boundary, then that obviously would impact them from not being included within any reimbursement in the future, but if they are included within the boundary, as long as our bottom line figure that we include within the plan in terms of reimbursement, as long as we utilize that, we can bring back forward to you a plan, an amendment to this plan to actually reimburse them for something in the future if that was something that they had determined that they wanted to do.
So it could be included.
Yep. Basically, what we do is, you'll note that in the staff report specifically, we say that there are potential TIF-eligible expenses identified totaling approximately $4.1 million. As long as that $4.1 million is not exceeded during the life of the TIF district, then we have the opportunity to bring back amendments to you for any other types of expenses within the district, as long as we don't go over that $4.1 million. Just to give you an example, when we had the first downtown TIF district, which encompassed all of downtown, that was obviously many different property owners, and so all of the naturally occurring increment from all of those property owners went to helping incentivize specific developments to occur within the downtown area. That's another example of a much larger district where multiple property owners are involved.
Thank you, Erica.
I have one question. How much of the contributing amount is the DeWitt building when it comes off the historical roll? How much does that contribute to the TIF?
I believe it's a total of about $150,000 during the life of the district.
Good, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Any additional questions of Erica? No? Thank you, Erica. Anybody else have anything to add? Anybody else have anything to add?
I'm Craig Blade, thirty-one thirty West Fifty-Seventh Street, Suite One Twelve. Representing Mr. Hag, myself, and developing this Hilton Garden Inn. We made the application. We feel real good about it. It's going to be a little bit different because this is a customizer urban Hilton Garden Inn, so you have to go through a whole different design process and everything else, and it's normal. It'll also have a, a event area that'll take in about four hundred and fifty people. So it'll have a large area for events like weddings, conventions, and different things like that. We're projecting between a hundred and a hundred and four rooms with also some community areas in the, in the front lobby area with a restaurant, lounge, things that go along with that. It'll have over two hundred and some underground parking stalls that go along with it, along with the CNA building, which is right around five hundred and twenty. So it'll be the largest parking structure within Sioux Falls. We plagiarized the Greenway from Sharapa. Yeah. But I think it looks pretty good. Anyway, we, we hope that this will be just as classy as the city has done on the Sharapa area. I mean, if you haven't been down there, it's a, a true work of art, and John Jacobs and that group should be very much complimented. And we've been working with them on designs on how to get our outside areas to work in with the city areas, and so we're excited. The CNA building will have the first occupants moving in May, and we hope to start this project once the river ramp is down sometime May first.
Thank you. Any questions of Craig? Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? I will look for commission action on item number thirteen with regard to the boundaries, approval of the boundaries.
Madam Chair, do we have to do these one at a time, I think?
Yes. Item number thirteen is what we're taking right now. Approval of the boundaries to create the Tiff fourteen.
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to approve item number thirteen, the district boundaries.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second for item number thirteen. Any discussion? No? I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Item number thirteen carries. Item number fourteen, I will look for a motion.
Madam Chair, let's make a motion to approve item number fourteen.
Do we have a second? I'll second. We have a motion and a second for approval of creation of the plan for District fourteen. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number fourteen carries. I think the last item up for business tonight is a slate of officers for this coming year. And I'll look for a motion for a slate of officers.
Madam Chair, I would nominate Commissioner Dunlop as chair and Commissioner Larson as vice chair for the upcoming year.
And I'll second that.
Move, nomination cease.
Any discussion?
Well, Meredith and I have to caucus. Will we have to speak to any caucus groups?
Believe me, let me get my paper ballot. I'll have more people get up fast enough.
I was, Kenny, I was lobbying for senior executive vice chair title. All right. I understand.
Ken, that's not exactly the way you put it yesterday noon.
I suspect not.
I think there are done minutes from yesterday's meeting. All those in favor of the slate of officers for two thousand and twelve signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We have new officers for next month. We look forward to you sitting in this seat, Kenny.
Thank you.
You've done a tremendous job this year.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Kenny.
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation that we, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. Motion and approved. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.